I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning, everybody.
We call the change order for most of the agenda.
Got a couple of corrections. There's no place for claims on there.
You're right, Dave. We have claims today.
Anything else, Dave? I don't see anything else.
Yeah.
Well, we need the minutes changed to six twenty-eight.
Just approve the minutes to the six twenty-eight, twenty-one.
Yeah.
As opposed to seven-six.
We didn't have a meeting.
Right.
Great. Okay, we have two corrections, two additions to the agenda. I'll look for a motion to approve the amended agenda.
So, move second.
First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. All right. Approve the minutes from six twenty-eight.
I read through those and they look fine, so I'll make that motion.
Second.
Now, first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. General public concerns.
I have a couple of things, uh, just wondering how you guys made out with that reclassification, if you got that line moved back where it used to be, or if anything's happened with that?
I think it is.
Yes.
We did have a meeting on that.
Yeah.
And, uh, I think it is taken care of, Bill.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Good, I'm happy about that. That's the way it should have been.
Yeah.
Yep.
It is, so that, like you said, nothing allows anybody up in the future.
Okay.
It's correct. That's correct.
I don't care about now as a future. I don't care about right now.
Stop visiting Kim, but I've heard you have any...
Yeah, we did, right after the original.
Yeah.
All right.
We got that amended.
Now, we got one more thing here, fellas. You got, and ladies, you got this COVID money. There's a project in this county that needs doing really bad. Let's go from the radio station north. Let's get that road blacktopped up through there because there's a lot of traffic on it. Anything that cannot go onto the bridge goes around that way.
Sure.
That, that road needs a lot of some attention. I think, Ben, we probably...
It gets a lot of traffic, no doubt, but there's no money for asphalt on the road.
Um, is there some COVID money available?
Unfortunately not.
No, no. That would qualify.
It doesn't qualify.
COVID money, right now, it's set aside for internet everywhere, uh, water and sewer.
Sewer.
Also the bank, three things.
There's mitigation.
Say, well, that will make people spread out a little bit more.
Yeah. Outdoor, outdoor spaces for, um, to keep people safe, things like that.
If it was a bike trail, we could.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Right, if it was.
If there's a bike trail, there's a need. There you go.
I don't know who I look at this day, but these are the things that you can use it for. And roadways are... Supposedly, there's money coming down the pipeline at some point for infrastructure, but I haven't heard that they've...
But...
They've talked about it, and that's all I think they've done is talked about it.
That's all I wanted to say.
Thank you, Bill.
You got things, Dave.
General public concerns. All right, let me go on.
Andy's there.
Hello, Andy.
Hi. Sorry about last time. I got caught up with a big solar issue. Had to be upstairs. When the solar blows, I can't, I gotta go.
That's important. You want that in the minutes?
So, that's, I apologize. So, the reason I wanted to come talk to you is about a year ago now, maybe a little longer, I was in COVID. I talked to you guys about the, what's been going on with tourism within the state and the idea with... The new entity was forming called Iowa Travel Industry Partners, ITIP, was forming in it, and they were setting themselves up to kind of replace or to oppose themselves to the state with regards to tourism. They have created themselves as an entity. The state is not supporting them. So, the state, they, they are going to function, they're gonna be, they're gonna be forced to function as a standalone entity, just like the regions. And so, you recently got a letter from Debbie Durham, I believe, that supervisors did, that spoke to the importance of the tourism regions and how the regions are gonna function within the state and within the counties to help support the cities and the counties and then the state itself as far as tourism. So, Sandy just spoke about bike paths, right? So, that's one of the things that tourism definitely speaks to. And it's one of the things where the tax dollars that have been generated by tourism helps to bring this about, right? So, I mean, one of the things that we wanna make sure that you understand is that the western Iowa tourism region, which is the region that we belong to, is going to remain as it is. It's not going to change. The region models are gonna remain. That has the full support of the governor. It has the full support of Debbie Durham, who is the director of Iowa Tourism and the Iowa Economic Development Association. So, she is that, or I'm American Development Authority, I apologize. And then, so, the, the concept behind it, and what I wanna let you know is that the nine billion dollars that is genuinely generated in a non-COVID year for tourism is still going to be... Those, those dollars create five hundred and forty million dollars in taxes. So, when you look at that, how does that impact Humble County? Well, the, the reason I'm talking to you is that Humboldt, that DeBrado in West Bend, which is in Sisypala, Alco County, impacts the northern tiers, the northern tier of Humboldt County. Our tax dollars affect Twin Rivers, the school district. Again, those tax dollars come down, it, it impacts Odison, it impacts, uh, it impacts Livermore, it impacts Bowdoin, it comes through there. It doesn't all get all the way down to Humboldt, I don't think. It might. There might be something come down there. But for the northern tier of Humboldt County, when we're living in Humboldt County, it's important that I think I get the word out and that I talk to you and keep you guys abreast of what's going on. DeBrado last year had one heck of a year because people didn't travel, so they stayed home and they came to us. We finished the year eighty thousand dollars' value.
Wow.
Just in the gift shop. That's not our donations. That's just the gift shop. So, we went from two hundred and four thousand to two hundred and eighty-four thousand. And so, our tax revenues, you should start seeing that trickle into the north part of the county, and so those dollars are gonna be there. So, as you get COVID money and understand kind of how this works, we have infrastructure with regard to internet and distancing and the things that you were just talking about, right? And bike paths and things that are gonna be, you know, that are gonna help, those are things that can definitely help. So, those are things that we wanna make sure that we're taking clear advantage of because if it's gonna be a reason to draw people in. So, for example, with campgrounds, they're the northern tier of the county, why don't we get internet? Why don't we make sure that there's water? Why don't we make sure that there are things that can go that can help that? Because one of the spikes that we're seeing across the state is camping is up. Really? Because people can go sit in their campers and distance and, you know, go every other campsite, whatever they're gonna do, they aren't so much anymore than they were. So, those are the things that we can look at. So, as we look at that and moving forward, kind of go down that road, but there is a couple of pieces I'm gonna share, and then I'm gonna shut up. Um, when we look at where things were, so, there were four hundred and fifteen billion dollars nationally lost in tourism. Four hundred and fifteen billion dollars lost in travel and tourism through 2020. We didn't see that kind of a loss in Iowa. We saw, we saw losses in Iowa, but the losses came in eastern part of the state, where the larger cities are. That's where you're gonna see a lot. So, when you hear about that, that doesn't apply to us. We actually were up. When you look at the western side of the state, the central part of the state, we were actually up. So, and I'm a key example of that. Uh, and I can provide you, we're nonprofit, so I can provide you any information you want on our finances, so you can see what we did. The other thing that, that you wanna, we wanna make sure that we look at is with the loss of all the state in revenue, the taxes, and again, it impacts us because, it impacts the whole state because Cedar Rapids and Dubuque and Des Moines lost out on some things that were happening. But the tax revenue that hit us and affects us directly isn't so bad. So, use the dollars that we get and make sure that, you know, you were applying those dollars across the board. But tourism and travel are reasons why that was growing. Keep in mind as you move forward that that's something that we need to look at as far as kind of give it back a little. Because, you know, if we want people to live here, we gotta get them here. And that's a big piece of this, right? We want people to come live in Humboldt. You gotta figure out a way to get them to come to Humboldt. And it's not just, oh, we've got the greatest manufacturing jobs in the world. Well, that's, you're gonna get this big of a piece. But if we've got a reason for people to come, there's a stat, right? I mean, we all love the town, and we all love the county, and we all love this area, so let's read that out. So, that's really what I wanted to share with you. So, two things that I wanted to make come across. One, when you hear about the tax and the, all the, the trouble that we're having, that's where it is. The only thing that directly affects us is workforce. That's the hardest part. That's, that's where everybody's hit, regardless of what industry you're in. So, and regardless of what type of area you're part of. So, make sure that as we look through that, that if we can figure out a way to get dollars and use dollars, and I don't know that dollars apply directly from COVID money to helping with, to, to secure some things, I think that has to come from each individual business, but encourage that, right? Encourage that. And maybe we have to start looking at agri-tourism. Maybe we have to figure out a different way that we can approach this going forward, because now we have the opportunity to reset. So, let's look at ways that we can reset from the county level and kind of move that way. Because once the county does something, then the cities are gonna follow, right? Whether it's Odison, Bowdoin, Livermore, Hardy, Humboldt, Redwood, whatever, we're able to Dakota City. We're gonna be able to make those things change. So, that's what I wanted to share with you this morning, kind of, right now. So, if anybody's got any questions, I can field them.
Well, just on what, going back to like a year or plus ago, when you were here and we talked about, speak to the way the tourism industry is set, because you said the state.
Right.
The regions, and then you said, just mentioned they discounted the, the, the new organizations.
Yeah, so, yeah, so, the, the, they wanted to become, so, ITIP, right? So, ITIP wanted to become the, kind of the voice for marketing and promotion for the state. And they wanted to disband the region system as the, the primary means of doing that. And the state said, well, no, that region system is broken, so we're not gonna change it. Why break, why break something, why change something that is broken? Just because you, you've got a couple of senators and you've got a couple of representatives that might be supportive of it, doesn't mean that that's what has to happen. And this isn't political. This isn't a political issue. This isn't a Democrat versus Republican. This isn't an independent thing. This is, this is a what's better for the state kind of thing. And the governor and Director Durham have recognized that. And so, what they said is that if ITIP wants to exist, that's fine, but you're gonna exist just like these other entities, and you're gonna have to compete for the dollars, just like these other entities. We're not gonna just give you dollars.
Okay.
So, they were going after, so, one of the, one of the, uh, one of the pieces was that there was a, a bill put forth that was gonna tax the Iowa Alcohol and Beverage Division for five million dollars. It was gonna fund tourism. They wanted the, 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 there was a piece of that that ITIP put on a, and the supporters of ITIP had an amendment added through legislative process for an extra two million dollars to fund them. And that killed the five million dollars. Because it's not gonna, the, the state doesn't have the ability to just come up with seven million dollars like that. Right? I mean, Iowa, Iowa Beverage Division, Alcohol Beverage Division, they have the ability to do piece, the piece of it, but not all of it. So, when you, when you take and you push it too far, and as you all know, you're just gonna kill it. So, the bill now is to go back in again next year, hold it here, make it a clean bill, run that bill through and get it, because they committed to doing that again for one more year. So, we need to make sure that we're supporting, and that comes from a county level. It's gotta come from us down at the lowest level to you, to, to the state. It's gotta move itself up and kind of be grassroots movement. So, when we know we've got support of the county, you know, cities, and then we got support of the county, and then we can get support of the state, that's where that goes, right? And that's where, you know, Senator Kramer, Rankin, Representative Sexton really become our allies to help us kind of work through that, and they have better allies. They worked very hard to help kind of keep this. So, they opposed the process as well. Senator Kramer was involved in.
The gist of it, when I, going back to your presentation, that you gave us like a kind of a concern or a warning with this ITIP. Now, they've kind of not been recognized by the state, so we, tourism-wise and state and county-wise, we're probably in a better spot maintaining what was there. Hopefully getting some more funding for the tourism business as a whole. So, I feel, I just, you know, you said pay attention to this. They were, if I remember, more attuned to the larger population centers. They didn't care about rural areas and things going on out here that we can promote. So, we're actually moving back now to the way it always has been, paying more attention, get some money, funding to do some things.
Yeah.
So, we're actually in a pretty good spot.
We're in a very good spot, right.
Okay.
So, yeah, so, everything's a good, thank you for the summary. That's a very good spot. So, the, the thing is, is that there're gonna be programs that are gonna open up through, you know, Iowa, you know, Travel Iowa and through the Iowa Economic Development Authority that are gonna allow for us to kind of come after county funds or come after grant monies or different things that are there, right? And the opportunity to maybe fund something like Iowa, which has been around, Iowa Water Landing Legacy, right? To start funding that and putting, you know, they, they want the three-eighth cents to go in to kind of fund that thing, but there are other, there are other mechanisms that can allow for that to happen. But that's a way that certain things, especially in Humboldt County, we can get that, that going. That's gonna help us out with some of the things that are going on. I mean, we know there's some contentious things going on in that right now in the county, so, between the city and the county, yeah. Oh, that's gonna help ourselves out, so, you know. That's where we can really start making an impact, right? And we're not saying create something new, you know, but we don't wanna create another park in Humboldt County, but we wanna enhance what we've already got.
Excellent.
Yeah.
All right, thanks, Andy.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks for all your hard work with that.
Yeah, appreciate it. Well, I'm also happy to do it.
That's a good deal. Thank you, Andy.
Say bye.
Morning.
All right, Ben, you, you get her done? Ten minutes?
Two.
Way to go.
I do it in three minutes.
I like that.
Three minutes.
Okay.
Uh, the only item that I've got on the agenda is to approve change order number two for farm-to-market program, uh, project number FM CO forty-six, parent seventy-nine. Um, what this is, is, so, the last pay vouchers that, that we put through, which were two weeks ago, I believe, the line item for asphalt overrun on the Bowdoin to McKnight's Point job ended up overrunning on quantities by just over the fifty thousand dollar threshold that the DOT has. Once you go over that fifty thousand dollar mark, you have to do a change order to change the quantities to bump them up to actual quantities that were run.
Does that mean that original DOT sidelines say you can go up to fifty thousand without a change order?
Right.
And we ended up at fifty-three, five fifty.
Yeah, fifty-two thousand. So, what they did is they basically struck the line out on that pay voucher that we approved two weeks ago for the overrun on asphalt until we get this change order done.
But this still puts us in compliance with being before the end of the year, fiscal year, right?
Uh, this is all farm-to-market money, so it...
Doesn't make any difference. Perfect.
Okay, so this, basically, that gets struck, this gets changed, added, and then we're at the, we're at the number of fifty-three, five fifty-eight.
And then, and then the next pay voucher will reflect that by putting in the quantities that we'd already approved.
Okay. Well, anything else on that?
Nothing else on that.
I'd make the motion to approve the Iowa DOT resurfacing change order number two.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Here. Senator, we got a few minutes. Why don't we do claims?
Yes, sir.
I looked through the claims and I come up with general at four eleven, five four six oh nine. And I had drainage at sixty thousand, two six five point five five.
I'll second that.
I guess I would say that the majority of the general was, with start of the new year, our distribution for different things that we've allocated money for, so we start funding the, that's where a lot of that money went, so, there's going.
Okay.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Here. I'll get it out here. Gives me a little more room.
You want you to get that long? Let's just save it up there.
Okay. All right, let's, uh, look at accept and raise on file treasurer semi-annual report for the quarter of June thirtieth.
I know, it's like...
Well, I'm guessing, being Chan is not in here, it's later case, but everything looks in order, so.
Certified correct?
I would make a motion to accept her semi-annual report.
I'll second that.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, accept and raise on file recorder's quarter report for the quarter ending June thirtieth.
I didn't see it.
I don't have it either.
Okay, good.
No, no.
Okay, 'cause I was like, I don't see it anywhere.
We can skip over that one and...
You want me to pass it around?
Oh, you got it?
Yeah, let's pass it around here.
I don't have it. I didn't.
This is a breakdown of all those little things.
Pass Alan Dawson. Pass it down.
She did a pretty good transition. Well, I would make the motion to accept the recorders.
Yes, sir.
Quarterly report.
We have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. Got that one? There we are. Okay.
Motion to go under drainage. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are going to drainage.
I see by your shirt, but I don't know who you are, so...
I'm Derek Behrens of Jacob's Monster Guard.
Aye.
Engineering training under Rick at Ben for three years. Next year, I'll turn up to need to get my professional license, doing hydrology exams.
Yeah, that's a pretty tough exam.
Yeah, I got, uh, two of my books to study for it just last week. I wrote about that.
Yeah, my son-in-law did that two years ago.
Oh, true. Rick is, uh, down on the River Cleanout and Wear Project, so I...
Oh, he does that every year, I know.
Yep. Yeah, they go for less and less duration. I think they're just doing one day this time, but they're, uh, they're down there, so I'm filling in for him today.
Morning, Jim.
I have a green sheet. I could tell everyone to close up. Just put it on, please. Thank you.
A good one, Pat. That was a good one.
Yeah, I see a lot you can use to share already.
All right, we're here for, um, DD ten completion hearing. That was a drainage ditch out here that we had cleaned, uh, several pipes repaired. Peterson, they've been doing it, did a great job from what I've looked at out there.
Appreciate it.
Everything's been picked up, cleaned up, and looks like it's pretty well leveled up and looks nice.
Yes. Yeah, we don't have any comments to add on that. I mean, it went well. There was a lot of extra pipe to be repaired, but those were approved, um, bid price, just additional work. Makes a lot more sense to take care of the water out there. Yeah. Um, yeah, haven't had any other concerns addressed to us. We would recommend finalizing the out and paying to retain any of the other concerns.
The seating of any CRP that was distributed is the landlord's responsibility.
Typically, yeah.
Anybody have any complaints? Any written complaints?
No, I have not received anything.
Yeah, Anna was asking about this. Seems to be a lot of pipe, extra pipe that's not replaced, so we could find...
Yep, and that's where we're out there. We, I myself was out doing some of the dip, where we surveyed it, and between overgrown grass and some of the pipe are downright buried, and we just didn't see them, and then it ended up being additional expense after the fact, but they all were in need of it.
So, what about the surface drains?
Um, those are basically so water doesn't flow over top of the bank and cut, um, the top down into the ditch, and it's basically just protect it from erosion.
Well, is that part of the original plan or is that a farmer basement?
Uh, it's something we just include, whether we're replacing one or adding one where it's needed, it's just kind of onsite as needed.
I know they did extend some of them out.
Get them out further from the ditch, because farming practices have changed.
Everything's bigger.
Yeah.
But then, do you all pay for that, too?
Yes.
As part of the, because it's pipe inclusion ditching, and they'll help to keep sediment out of the ditch.
Well, you know, I hope that...
Stay cleaner longer, hopefully.
I mean, I'm going to pop without helping anything down below.
Helps everyone else, I guess.
Dean Travis is here. He would know about the, was there a lot of surface drains prepared or replaced or fixed?
Um, there were quite a few. All the ones that got extended really needed to be replaced anyway, but they were, you know, generally forty feet. There were a few that were probably sixty feet that was in there, and we, we made them all eighty feet to get you sixty feet farmable on top. You need that. You lose about twenty feet of it to get through the bank and then out into the ditch, so it takes eighty feet to get them there, twenty-four-year-old planter with, that's farmable on top. So, none of them that we pulled out were eighty feet long, um, you know, the ones that... They had, they had asked us about extending those, and we told them they had to come in here and get approval to do it, but we would if the district was okay with that. So, they all came and they got their approval, and on those specific ones, we made them, made them eighty feet, but they were, we didn't rip out any that were in good shape to do it. They were, they needed to come out anyway, but, yeah, then we lengthened a couple of them. There was a couple, I wanna say that were forty feet, that we didn't lengthen. They just, they were either right, right on a property line and it wouldn't have helped them, you know, to farm that anyway, or they were just in a spot and they didn't need it. So, those we just replaced and put back what was there with new. But, yeah, there, there turned out to be quite a few. There's a few that, that we didn't change either. They looked like they were good enough condition. We just left them alone. But, kind of like he was saying, you get the ditch cleaned out and all of a sudden now you can see it. A lot of them all crawl down on the bank with a flashlight and look up inside of them, 'cause we found some that look okay from the bank, and then if you look up inside to the joint, you know, they're broken or they're, they're rusted off inside, or, you know, there's a tile that collapsed of the line. So, I just kind of started checking them all, just to make sure we don't miss, miss one that's broke back in the bank and you can't see it.
Travis, how far do you let those hang out?
We try not to go, you know, more than four feet unsupported. Um, usually we shoot for, like, three feet, but it's, the higher in the bank you go, you know, the further you'd have to come out.
Right.
And, and hang out to make, make the toe of the ditch. We try not to let it run down the bank either, um...
But those are the ones that usually get broke off when the snow's...
Yeah, they, uh, what we've seen is a lot of those, you know, the, the good thing is Jacobson Westergaard has totally hacked those spiral pipes. Those are the biggest problem we've seen. The riveted ones, they break off when the rivets get rusted and start breaking off on the seams, but, I mean, uh, so far, since we started doing this, the, the ones we've replaced with riveted, I don't think we've ever had a problem with, with even one, but...
Good.
That spiral pipe, I've seen that go in brand-new and go through one winter and unravel and get bent up, so it's...
And that was our experience. The only downside is the riveted, we have to go up to twelve-inch even for small, you know, a lot of tile outlets are smaller, but um, it's worthwhile to have the structure pipe, even if it is a bigger outlet and needed, just the longevity of it.
Part of it for us is if, we try to eliminate any water running on the bank, just 'cause
It just won't.
Honestly, from what we've seen, it's so much cheaper to just fix a pipe than to dig it up and then have to fix the bank as well, and so we just... We really try to keep all the water off the bank if we can, and hopefully it'll hold up better that way, but... But yeah, you're right, I mean, you hang them out, then they can get more prone to an ice jam or
Right.
or the snow sitting on top of them, so that's why we try to limit it. So, you know, we try to be about three feet usually is what we would like to be. You know, we have none to kind of four feet if you need it to get into the water, but...
Okay. Yep.
How do you get it, put the dirt on the other side, the other landowner's side? We get it every year.
Uh, it's a coin toss. It's usually the operator, he has, he has a preference, he likes where he works, he just, you know, a lot of it has...
Can I drive in?
Yeah.
If you talk to Travis, cookies brownish might help. But say that, the, that he allows you to machine on probably would make a huge difference if you...
Oh, because part of it is, is our land, isn't it?
Right.
Goes to another street and then property owner on the other side, so all he has to do is extend it to some...
You know, I, I've been out when guys have looked at projects and they, they look at, a lot of it is how they like to work. You know, they, they can see better going this way or whatever, and it's operator's preference usually is what Travis says.
Next time, give me a heads up and I'll take out a pen and draw.
There you go.
Usually we try to pick the lower side, um, you know, if there's a side of the ditch that's lower than the other.
So you can reach better.
We'll pick that one, you can reach better, and then you're, you're building up the side that's already lower.
Right.
Every time you clean these, you get a little higher, so we try not to throw it on the side that's already higher. You know, if there's CRP, that kind of makes a difference, too. I mean, it's not, not that that doesn't matter to the people that have CRP, but then you're not running down somebody's corn.
And you can do it and pick about there easily.
Yeah, it, it makes the whole thing go easier, but I, I know the grass gets destroyed there, too, and then not like that's meeting with, so...
Yeah.
Um, it's, this has been kind of a headache with a few projects, and it's, it's one of the deals, it, it seems like it's impossible to please absolutely everybody when you pick a side of the ditch to clean, but we...
And there's instances that I'm sure, I mean, I know you've done it over the years, you're going to clean from both sides. That it's require, I mean, it's...
Necessary.
It's necessary.
Required. I mean, you'll hog it out from one and then you'll clean up the other smoke at the toe from the opposite side then.
Yeah.
Just kind of to shape it.
Yeah.
You're doing a little nicer job.
It, it, I think, yeah, the, so I think maybe even moving forward, we're going to see both sides affected more than just one. Well, I'm diamond on it. So, but I'm going to say whichever side you're on, but it's going to be equally distributed, I mean, but sometimes it just, it's, like Travis said, it's kind of each ditch and cleanout project's a little different.
Well, and sometimes, you know, these ditches will have another ditch branch that comes off of them, well, you know, if you pick the side that the branch is coming off of, you get into that corner, then you got to get all the way around, or if you just pick the other sides, you just drag straight through and complete it all. I mean, every, everyone is different, and it, uh, yeah, I mean, sometimes it doesn't matter, and it's, it's like you said, just the guy digging it picks one, or...
Yeah.
Usually if I have a question, I'll, I'll call if the ditch has been engineered and...
Oh, the third one I have to call.
It can be bought.
Oh, Travis.
The maintenance is probably cleaning ditches a little bit earlier than forty years.
Yes.
And we don't have these big, huge...
Yes, yes, you're right, Pat.
If you can take a foot or two instead of four or five, you have a lot less...
Would help all these pipes changed at once, um...
The maintenance would be a lot.
Kind of be a little bit done.
The other thing on that pad is you guys see those things several times a year as opposed to we don't unless someone calls and says, "Hey, you want to go out and look at such and such ditch?"
Yeah, I'm not the head of the thing, so all these other people, yeah, they, they cut, that's the problem. No, I...
Well, if they just would say, "Give us a little heads up" and say, "You know, we're getting close to that point where we think maybe we should do something, so one of us could go out," or a couple of us squatting.
Have you ever thought about putting all the, the ditches in the whole county, like in a twenty-year rotation?
Yes. We're hoping. We're, we have something in front of us and we are aware of more flexibility in between now.
Travis and I just, just discussed that last week.
Yes.
Because he was, he, when he had turned in an invoice, he was stating how intense it is to have to try to dig out three and four feet, the additional damage that you do to somebody's land, the additional, you know, construction costs in leveling everything out, and he said it would be nice if we could discuss doing something like that.
We have, we are, we will.
But you also have years like this where there's nothing in the ditch, that it's beautiful digging, versus we've had years where they're almost bank full and you can't do a whole lot of anything, so...
And you end up spinning your wheels in those years. You go out for two days and then it rains and it comes up.
So then we got a mess, so...
Go away.
Well, not all that bare disturbed dirt just even...
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Two years ago, it was brutal. Every ditch we touched was estimated by those footprints.
So we, we're trying to get a middle of the, middle of the road for everybody, but like I said, if the farmers say, "Hey, you might give us a warning to go out and take a look at it," it's sure, you have more eyes than we do when we're driving down the road, looking, gawking, trying to find, so...
Okay, anything else?
I do have a hard copy of the asphalt here, or...
Yeah, I, I have my copy in here, 'cause I wanted to ask you about, um... I had attached a copy of the map on the back of the hearing that was sent to each of the landowners, and I wanted you to explain each of the red marks, is that on, on the asphalt, that actually showed each of the tile size, but I just wanted to confirm, were each of those locations actually replaced?
So, um...
Like what would coincide with these, these landmarks and the size tiles that were replaced, 'cause when Patty stopped in the office this morning and she wanted to know, is this just the marking of each of the outlets? Or this is what was actually replaced? I should probably show that to Rick.
Um, as far as the list goes, I think everything, all the points on the other side are the tile outlets.
Okay, that, that coincides with each of these tile connections?
Any that were replaced, you know, we went a little ways.
We're showing those further down.
Um, so-and-so tile.
The main...
The dark purple is going to be just existing, and the white pink will be installed. Kind of our standard drafting colors, I guess, and then you don't know that accordingly as well. Yeah, I can leave this out, but you guys, I mean, I saw the letter, I noted it in the hard copy.
But not all were going to be replaced, it's more, more, more than they've noted on this.
I saw, so yeah, ideally, like, you want that information over here somewhere, the ones on your land, and well, to, to...
I have one.
You got that.
She's dirty, though.
And she's glad that it's just the one. Especially the new to be replaced.
I don't know how far this goes, I don't know.
She did what she said.
Yeah, we, you know, we meant to fish it to get down.
You noted what they were...
You could really argue more, I mean, and we don't have jurisdiction on that, so...
We got the big, big dam.
Good.
Okay. All right, so we need a motion to accept the completion report.
I'll make that motion.
No, second.
So first and second, any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And the opposed, motion carries. So the project is completed. Thank you very much, Travis, you did a great job.
Thank you, we appreciate the work.
Like the fact that everything's picked up and cleaned and hauled away, that you guys don't usually bury it in the field, you haul it away and...
Yeah, if anybody has anything in the future, you know, don't, don't be afraid, just give us a call with the landowner or whoever, we usually try to, like, work with people when we can here in the community, so... Don't be afraid to call us if there's an issue, or, you know, if, if there's a pipe or something that we missed, we can certainly come back and get that anytime.
Yeah, that does sometimes show up. They, they are not perfect, but they do the best they can and do something different.
Or rock or two that's left in the leaves, so we appreciate it very much.
Thank you for the good work.
I've known you as more, he's not perfect.
You won't find any disputing that.
First party's got a little hate in it, Travis Jr. coming up.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay.
We are in drainage.
Is there anything else we want to discuss?
Take care.
Was this just for our general knowledge?
I think so.
That was the fact that, uh, the changes made this past legislative session.
Yes.
Remount.
So you go up the mound and you don't have to send out...
Right, want to send out quite some paperwork.
Publish, so does, I guess, it's publish, bunch of the stuff.
Yeah, the biggest thing, um, is changing the threshold of the fifty thousand dollars on competitive bids from fifty thousand to a hundred and thirty-nine, which everyone has been well aware of that, and the other part is in having to actually publish the hearings. Going forward, we do not have to provide each landowner's name.
Right.
Right.
Citalis publication.
We'll just take, like, the text of all the hearings that I usually send out, and we'll just list the date, the time, the place.
Yes.
In the district, of course.
And as stated, we, I mean, as trustees, we've, even the last couple of years, moved towards more and better maintenance, of, of, i.e. cleaning ditches. And we have flexibility to, you know, get after things, uh, get them cleaned, get them repaired sooner. I mean, the one that Travis has still not quite done with the whole BD-18 system, so it's so massive and so many branches, and those landowners and tenants that are been in the area and farming for sixty years, never been cleaned. And they're cleaning out massive amounts, have cleaned out massive amounts and repaired, you know, all sorts of things, and so...
Yeah, 'cause the tile doesn't do you much good if your outlet is plowed or collapsed or fifty percent...
So, I really think even over the last couple of years, we've moved towards more of a maintenance instead of these huge projects. Hate to take money out of engineers' mouths, but, uh, we will, because it's, uh, saves the district's money and it gets accomplished the infrastructure back what it needs to be for a lot less money.
Then we can hire competent people to do it, rather than getting the lowest bid, doing what they're doing. Now, that was some of the worst problems we had, we had people who were not doing a good job, but they would...
They got the bid because they were the lowest and it ended up being kind of a malfunction.
Yeah.
So we have, I think, as trustees, really addressed that and we're keeping an eye on it, but Bruce brings up a good point. People need to speak up, too, they're the ones that are farming it, owning it, and they see a problem, don't let it fester.
Their eyes are out there a lot more than what we are.
Well, it can become a bigger problem, and we can take care of it, we've got the means to do it.
Right.
Okay.
Yep.
No, I have some invoices that everyone needs to approve, and other than that, it was just a completion hearing, and the only question I, um, Pat had asked prior to the meeting was what, what all the marks were on there.
She got an answer for that?
Yes.
We're good?
Yeah.
We're going to have some time to discuss the outlet, by chance?
Sure.
BD-10 outlet. Yeah, we're in drainage, let's go ahead and discuss it. Okay, I don't want to hurry up. Um, there's a plot map of where it's marked up, if you want to pass those down. Um, so this is something Rick, I think, met with, I believe you...
Yeah, I was out there with Rick Coffer at one time, I've actually been out there three times and looked at this.
Sure. Um, Rick was in contact with landowners, which I think for the one parcel, there was four landowners listed, and then it was actually through the attorney that they were, uh, that's who they were supposed to work through, if you want to pass that down, that's a copy of our letter we sent our attorney, who, uh, we just talked to, I believe, last week, and they're hoping to get back to us yet this month, um, um, if they're good with moving forward with this cleanout, just as an hourly thing, and remove the trees, and um, the minor expansion needed to get an adequate outlet for BD-10. Um, so if we don't hear from them by early August, we will be reaching out again.
Yeah, this is something I want to do after the crops are probably, there is CRP alongside this, but if you're going to be burning, you don't want to be doing that till...
So like, this is just off the Thor Blacktop?
Yes.
Over there by, um, south of Gordon Kirk Cross, right?
Yeah, kind of, in a sense, yeah. It's, uh, directly, basically, right across in the next section from where I registered across. Um, it's a half-mile south of the Thor Blacktop.
Okay.
The district ends, and then it dumps into this national creek, and this creek has got trees on it a lot. It isn't like it's full silt, but the trees fall in there and create dams and they collect more branches, and then it, that turns into a little dam in no time, and, um...
Well, this the same one, this is just a common occurrence with ends of ditches and outlets. Uh, 'cause there's several landowners involved here?
Uh, it's just, uh, one property, but several others.
Yeah, yeah.
One, okay, because is this the same one we discussed, not all that long ago?
There was a bridge in there.
Yeah, they removed that, they got rid of that, but that's...
And then we're out there looking at the bridge, we've seen all these trees that are in there, and that's what spurred this conversation, and you need to clean up some of the trees.
Right, and then, but the original conversation was, well, we really, you're one person to contact, now it appears there's several people.
Yeah, we're talking about there's always one owner. Yeah, which this attorney has, is basically the rights to, as far as who we go through to make decisions and things, and drainage squad dictates, we can't, we have a right to approve the outlet. It's really vague on how far, so that's where we're doing this, about quarter-mile stretch or so, um, to get adequate outlet for the district that, I mean, is significantly better now.
Yeah, the, the, this first section is pretty much, there's trees, more trees further down, but this here is where, what I've seen, really blocks them off.
The fallen into the ditch, into the creek, and...
Yeah.
Well, hopefully, they'll hear back and, well, written letter, it's just, uh, get rid of the blockages, basically.
Yeah.
Not necessarily go in there and log the trees, but just clean the stuff off the ditch.
No, I think just kind of clean up the brush.
Clean up the brush and make it flowable.
I think that's, again, that, this is a common...
Then you do have the right, um, you know, they're going to write it up, so it's like an easement where you can come in.
Make it bend and meet.
Give them so many days notification and then whatever, and be able to go and clean it.
Yeah.
Good.
'Cause there is, there is a field lane that follows the dredge ditch back in there, so...
So there is access to it. No, I think this is, again, it's, it's pretty common with outlets.
And it should be minimal enough that no problem just doing a... And it should be minimal enough that no problem, just doing a holler to clean out the way you want, or Peterson or someone else are comfortable with it.
Yes.
It wouldn't have to be a full-blown design and bid.
Right.
Which would elevate the cost.
That's excellent.
If you're looking into it.
Yeah, thank you. Hopefully you're back and it's something we can get accomplished.
Yeah, we hope to hear in the next few weeks. Um, and Rick did put together, you guys are wondering about a quote on doing Asbills topo of DE-18, is that right?
Yes.
Um, to do a full-blown survey of the bottom would be significant. Um, Rick was looking at not to exceed 14,000, which is a lot for Asbills data. He wasn't sure if that's something you guys would be wanting to do or, as far as what we want to do there. But that's a lot of work for Asbills information. We could go get some shots at a few spots and at a significantly lower price.
I got a dumb question here. Can it read ditch bottoms?
Uh, if the water is not in there, um...
Yeah.
Not accurate.
Not enough word you're going to be able to tell slope and everything on Asbills that way.
That'd be a cheap way of doing it.
Yeah, typically hit or miss, it could be half a foot to a foot of variation, which for just overall field topo, maybe, survey, maybe, but down a ditch bottom, it wouldn't...
So, that, if you came, you threw out a number of 14,000, what did that entail? Is that a fairly in-depth, uh...
Um, it'd be 180 or 200.
That's fairly in-depth.
Yeah, getting surveyed out of...
The whole district?
I believe so, yes, for all the ditches there.
Would they make note of, I'd say crossings under roads and such and...
Yeah, it'd be basically the whole contours like our plans were designed, basically.
You shoot all the tile and...
Yep.
I don't know, you say tile, I don't know that...
Every tile that dumps into the dredge ditch, they should all go...
Yeah, any outlets that are, we would collect what were in there.
We'd check the data on those, huh? About, you know, size, elevation.
Yeah, we'd collect those, I mean, as far as going in depth of where they go beyond there.
Yeah, no.
No, but where they dump into the ditch.
Yeah, yeah.
And no.
That's a lot of acres.
That's huge.
How many acres are in, you know, after you guys opened?
I don't.
There's thousands of acres.
Huge, it's one of the biggest districts in the county. Uh, 14, I mean, and that's...
It sounds like a big number.
But you're talking every, you're talking quite accurate...
Yeah, information, full survey of it, like we would for design on a ditch project.
So, you're going to take basically current depth that's just been cleaned?
Yep.
And recorded.
Looking at that, we wouldn't be able to necessarily call it out, in and back out and stuff, so we'd be taking the vote and have multiple people on site.
Yeah.
And that's where it adds up.
Yeah.
So, that's where it kind of adds up too.
I know you're thinking it's probably a good thing to do.
A few, I mean, what has been lacking and why the conversation came up is the data was poor. It's just the historical data, it was poor. They ran into problems on the upper end of the cleanout that there wasn't even correct. The elevations were not even correct. So, if it can be accurate, spread across that many acres, it may not amount to very much money.
But it's probably a dollar an acre.
To actually have that information, you know, it's kind of like we talked, none of us will probably be involved in the full cleanout of that ditch.
No, never again, not for that.
But Travis's kids might be, Rick Peterson's grandkids, and to have actual hard data as to what is the depth, what is the slope, could be invaluable for future generations.
But even when we're doing all our research and everything and using old benchmarks, I mean, a lot of those aren't there. I mean, they're used at nails and fence posts.
No, I mean, it's...
At all, where it's not a line.
And it's done now, it's ready to be done, it'd be a good time to do it.
This is the time, because it's just about fully completed. And you would do the branches?
Yes, that's my understanding when Rick put that number together.
Why don't you make sure that...
Is there a possibility?
This would encompass that huge district.
Rick was talking 10 miles a ditch, so that would include a lot of...
Why don't you make sure that, verify that it's the branches and everything?
Yeah, verify those numbers and...
And could, this wouldn't be to the penny, but can you do a rough approximation of cost back to the landowners in the district?
They can just find out how many acres are in the DE-18 with all its branches and stuff.
Well, it's 10 miles long.
Well, yeah, you take the miles, the ditch, think of the surface area that encompasses.
Yeah, it's thousands and thousands.
Thousands of acres. So, I mean, it sounds like a big number, but if it, like Bruce said, if it includes the branches, the location of the tile outlets, it might be money well spent for the district and recorded so that when the next person comes in or there's any question in the meantime, there's hard and fast data to look at.
20 years from now, they have to clean it again.
And they're going to wonder, well, this is kind of weird, what is the depth? Well, here we go. Oh, shoot, we've got three feet of silt in this area. We should get that cleaned now instead of 60 years from now.
That's one of the hardest things with doing design for these ditch repairs is figuring out that hard bottom, because a lot of times benchmarks are gone.
Right.
And we're going off of what the hard bottom is, which, well, if you wait, 10 miles a ditch or something.
But it appears, this is the time to do it, so I think it's bears looking into.
Yeah. You double-check your numbers, see what all it includes and give back to us, and we'll check the acres and just get a rough idea what's it cost.
Yep, I think so.
I mean, I'm a landowner up there, I think it'd be valuable information for that.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else for me? I don't think so.
All right. Appreciate it.
All right.
Bill, Mr. Drainage?
Motion to go out as drainage.
Second? First and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, we're on green. Back in general session, we don't have too much left.
I will leave anybody here, everybody who's on the charters.
Okay, all right. We're done. Pass those in, please.
Did you ride your bike in the last couple of weeks?
I did.
Did you get down back on the trail in Fort Dine?
No, I rode the Three Rivers Trail.
That's challenging.
We have next on discussion action custodial wages.
I had given you a handout before.
Yep.
Um, Arturo and Paul.
Both have reached their, uh, hire dates, right?
Mm-hmm. It's been eight years since they've been hired. It's actually October 3rd of the year, but they were supposed to give an increase at six months. Um, due to everything changing and that, it went for the wayside. And what they're currently at, I have it noted on there. And just to my suggestion, I suggest the first one in the green and then with the 3% increase that would have happened or should have happened at the fiscal year beginning here, is the second wage.
That gets more in line with other county employees. I do do that one job.
I was going to say, I think it shows the appreciation of everybody that, uh, has come into the courthouse recently.
And you checked other counties too, didn't you?
Yeah.
With, that's I thought, yeah. And we were still...
I think the grounds, they do a fine job with the mowing and trimming and everything looks very nice.
And they not only, you know, do what you tell them, they make suggestions to make things better, so I really appreciate all that from them.
And if you walk in through their office down there, all you need is a pin and clean as a whistle.
Now, if we could just get a couple of other rooms down in the basement to look like that.
Either way, we got to have a big fire.
We got to find a place to get rid of some stuff.
I feel like we get a big hole up someplace. Fortunately, we got to keep it.
Yep.
A lot of it.
Well, I think this is well thought out and well deserved. Is it my, I don't know if I missed something, but is this beginning this fiscal year?
I think we're discussing possibly at the, yeah, July 1st.
To start this fiscal year, yeah, at this, uh, I think that would...
I'll make that motion, if you need a motion, to increase the 3% for both Arturo and for Paul.
Second round.
How about opening it up to the new salary, new wage?
That's what I, that's what I meant, the 3%, the new wage?
It's not 3%.
Oh, I'm sorry, the 21, I'm sorry, you're right, 21, yeah, suggested a 21 and a 3%. I'm sorry. Yes, you're right. Correct, I read that wrong.
And I second that.
Second from Eric. Any more discussion on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay. Looks like we hammered it all out. We've got three reports.
Uh, the only thing I have is, I didn't have anything, I better look before I make that statement. I missed the flags on last Thursday, but I got a picture from approach with the group that was up here, very well appreciated. Um, and then they also were, similar group came on Tuesday and took them all down, so a big thank you to the high school kids and all the other kids, the people that helped. Um, I would make a reminder for this week, we have the mobile food pantry, um, Wednesday night down Fairgrounds. Doesn't, supposed to start till, uh, 4:30, but usually at 4:15 they're chomping at the bit to get them going, so it's 4:15 till whenever they run out of food, so I would remind them and I'll call KHBT. Us Donovan could put that on our community calendar year at the best.
That was Wednesday at about 4:15-ish.
Yep. All help and be welcome. That's all I had.
On the 29th, I went over to the Pocahontas, um, supervisors meeting, we were discussing, um, benefits for Allison Hauser, as that's their, she's considered on their employee. So, we went over to discuss, um, that. Uh, then on the 30th, um, there was a webinar for the ARP money. And the 6th, I had a Zoom meeting for the Key Cat Cost Analysis Start Discussion. And I was supposed to have a meeting on the 9th down in Des Moines, but Bob showed, ticked that one up for me because I couldn't make it. Um, I have workforce development. We're coming to the end on everything on that.
So, you owe Bob?
I owe, yes, I owe Bob. But I know that's scary.
You're in trouble.
That's it.
What is Allison's position?
She is Service Coordinator for Rolling Hills.
So, now, well, she's under Pocahontas?
She is Pocahontas's employee. So, we were with CSS and they were the only region that had their employees under their umbrella. All the other regions have their employees as county employee. So, she went back to be a county employee.
And it?
That's it.
Okay, on the 29th, I had a VA prove claims down in Humboldt. We're way under budget this year, but wait till next year, they're picking up. Uh, flag's up on the 1st, I missed that one. And flag's down on the 6th, I missed that one too. Uh, they said they done them up in 18 minutes and down in 20. That's the text we get now, it's the speed timing, so...
Speedo time.
Coach is doing part of his conditioning, I think, for, he said, well, this is before running, so, and then he sent me a text and said, we did it in 18 minutes. I'm like, you're kidding.
You know why?
I've seen the day when we're there 30 hours.
We're speeding, Dean.
We're glad to help with the preconditioning.
Yes.
Maybe we should put the flags up more often.
I think so.
I think that's all I had. Got them, Dave? That's it.
On Monday, the 28th, that afternoon, I had a Building Families Meeting in Clarion. That went well. On Tuesday, the 29th, I had a Decategorization Meeting Conference Call that morning. And that was what I had that week.
On Tuesday, I helped take down the flags and we got a couple of gals from the courthouse helping us fold, which was nice. Actually, that was the hardest, keeping up the folding. Employees were pulling their flight poles down extremely fast. And, yeah, in about 27 minutes, we actually had them parked in the shed, with the folding door shut, which, that door sucks in that shed. It took us a while to get the door shut and open, then it didn't put them in.
You got a bird's nest up there.
I think it was more of a bird's nest.
Two or three.
And then, uh, Thursday, I had an Economic Development Meeting at City Hall. And Friday, I was up on the roof looking at a roof, just out of curiosity.
I was worried you were still up there when I walked.
No, I thought maybe somebody might lock me up there, I don't know. That's all I had. Okay.
How does that look, by the way?
You know, it's showing its age. I took some, uh, flex tape up there and put over one spot I had noticed earlier. But then, to me, it only looked like that one spot would be to the chance to leak, but that flex seals as good as they claim it is, I should have taken care of the problem.
Set up the screen door and the boat?
Yeah.
All right, it's safe. We're good. We are 100%.
Never worked for me.
All right. Anything else for your board?
Motion to adjourn. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Return to time 43.